I did for a minute, you're gone now.
It's the ghost.
There you are. Okay, can we, we'll go quickly before, okay, not to make a big thing out of, there are a couple of other little nitty gritty things. Lisa, can you hear me?
Yes, are they into raised portion?
Okay, the only other thing I think that should be corrected was under director's report, they talked about business and career center coordinated coordinator, and it just says Sherman. I think we should say Andrew Sherman and then put Sherman quotes, since everybody else has their full name. And I will go into a couple of other grammatical things. Does anyone else have any other changes, additions, deletions?
No, but I have a question. Is recording still on, or do you have to turn it on now?
I turned it on when I came back in.
It's supposed to be recording.
Okay. Oh, it is recording. I can see on the upper left. Good.
Oh, and it looks like Marion joined us.
Yeah.
Yes, I did.
Great. Okay, do I have a motion to accept, does anyone else have any additions, deletions, corrections to the minutes of March 15th? If not, do I have a motion to accept the minutes as modified, amended for March 15th, 2021?
I move to accept the minutes.
Thanks. Do I have a second, Linda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
I'm going to abstain since I wasn't at that meeting.
Okay. Public audience, we don't really have any public audience. Are there any communications?
I have none.
Okay, well then with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Rachel.
Perfect, thank you so much for having me.
There you are.
But I'm glad we can all hear and see each other. It's a big step one in these meetings. Well, my name is Rachel Gervell. I'm the head of borrowing and technical services. I joined the library in June of 2018, which is when this position was actually newly created. It helps to merge, I think, the front end of what we do, which is helping people, I'm at their circulation desk, helping them get information and resources with the backend, which is, you know, buying all those resources, processing them, cataloging them, helping people on the, find them through the catalog. My department is made up of four full-time staff. I have two full-time folks in the borrowing area up front and two out back in the tech services area. We also on our team have about eight to nine part-time staffs, including pages and library services assistants. And it's really important to me to, you know, in addition to higher training, revise folks, it's also really important to develop them as, you know, library science professionals. We have several folks who are going through library science programs and want to join the field. And, you know, developing them only helps to enrich what the library can bring to the community, and it helps them be better with those, how we serve the community. In normal times, I also manage the library's volunteer program. In addition to that team of folks, we put about a dozen volunteers to work for 100-plus hours in our area alone. We're really excited to start bringing back volunteers very shortly. We'll be bringing back a few of our old regulars that are very excited also to come and return with us. So that's very exciting for us. So just to give you a little bit more than, to give you a better sense about what my role really entails and, you know, how my department supports the library's mission and strategic plan, I thought I'd share with you some of the common things that I work on. First and foremost, my role is really about ensuring that the upper level circulation desk is staffed with friendly and knowledgeable folks. We really work hard to develop a warm and welcoming atmosphere. It's really right now, obviously, the primary entrance to the library, but it is also, you know, a very well-used library entrance during normal times. And so it's really important to take a good impression as folks are entering the library. And we want to be as helpful as possible at that service point as well. On a daily basis, my department is responsible for pulling the holds for patrons, that, you know, materials that people request, maintaining that flow of materials, whether it's coming in from patrons or coming in from other libraries, going out to other libraries. My area oversees the library's interlibrary loans, the ILL services. We sign people up for library cards, and we support the community book clubs at our circulation desk. And then otherwise, you know, we, you know, we enforce the circulation policies and periodically even suggest changes to those policies, like when we went fine free. That was a good example of that. A few other things I do, we oversee the updates to our integrated library system called Sierra. Those, that is the system that helps us circulate materials, but also is the system that lets you know when holes are available, if you've got an automatic renewal or not. We can manage and refine all those messages. We also provided e-cards this summer during the pandemic. Actually, we continue to still do that. And using our system allowed, we were able to automatically extend those expiration dates for folks in very large batches. Generally, we work really close with our consortium and area circulation supervisors, so that we can really maximize all that automation that Sierra can provide us. The more efficient we can be in those kinds of things, the more we can leverage our staff to do more exciting stuff, like displays and programs and so forth. One of my favorite parts of the job is that I get to select all the materials upstairs for adults in the fiction area, large print paperback, audiobooks, and other materials, which I'll explain in a moment. It's been a really fun experience to do that. I've been really working hard to also expand the offerings that we see as particularly in the fiction world. We're really interested in diversifying the number of authors that we present in our collections, the sorts of stories that people are able to read about, and finding own voices, as they're called. So authors who are writing about their own experiences. So a person of color instead of writing about a person of color's experience, as opposed to a white person writing about a person of color's experience. And to that end, we've also been developing recently conversation kits. So those are like little mini book club kits, where people can bring home those titles and start a conversation about equity, diversity, and inclusion at home with their pod or their family. And then things, we have a library of things, too. So in addition to those print materials, we have board games, we have Wi-Fi hotspots, telescope binoculars, all sorts of items that people maybe don't necessarily want to buy and have in their homes themselves, but can borrow from the library. That's a really fun part, to be able to say is part of my job. Generally, too, my department's responsible for providing reports and information about how all these things are that, that we buy are doing. We help keep track of all those expenditures. And then on the other end, once they're here, we help keep track of how many times they circulate, how many times they're turning over, if purchases we're buying are maybe sitting dead on the shelf and not finding their audience. It helps to give us a little bit of insight into how we're providing materials to citizen, to our community, our patrons. Since I was joining, we really, you know, worked hard to implement patron-driven acquisitions, which means we're really targeting our purchasing to what patrons are requesting. Every week, for instance, we look at the holds that our Simsbury patrons are placing on new items that we don't already have. And that helps us to identify those things to purchase that maybe I didn't see in the, you know, the catalogs, but a patron's requested it. And if one person wants it, then surely two people will read it. It's a good rule of thumb. And keeping track of all those, that information, too, has really helped us better align our budgets and think about how we're spending our money. For instance, we've really been able to leverage our digital dollars during the pandemic. And even before then, it was becoming very evident that our downloadables were really booming. But part of my job is to manage those downloadables, those collections and budgets, which is really fun as well. The use has been so high that we were able to sort of reallocate some of our funds to support that use. And it's only going up as we get deeper into the pandemic, frankly. But part of my job, too, is being able to bring in new resources like that for our patrons. So this past year, we were able to bring Acorn and Canopy to Simsbury residents. Those have been tremendously popular. And we've also got more digital magazines. We're just trying to expand our online offerings just as much as we're trying to expand and diversify what we're offering in print in the library. And then lastly, I'll just say that, you know, I participate as well with all, my entire team, in all of our library-wide initiatives, like summer reading and programming. Our department collaborates pretty often with the team librarian. We do library card signup events. I love doing the team lock-in. That's probably my favorite. And my department also organizes the annual giving tree, the warm reads program, and the blind date with the book display. Generally, we do really try and keep our displays super fresh and interesting. We make lots of bookmarks. We promote all kinds of activities going on in other departments. And we really try and bring, you know, draw out things from the collection that you might not otherwise find on your own. So we like to feature, you know, serious and fun things. The summer, our cookbook bundles were super popular. And right now, for instance, we have though, something celebrating Earth Day. We have a number of materials talking about how to upcycle, how to, you know, think about the world of garbage and recycling. And we have a little seed packet where people could take the seed packet to grow along with one of our staff members who's going to be growing something also from the seed library. So it's a really great job. I really enjoy the work that I do. I get to collaborate a lot with my colleagues, and really, we get to support each other and keep things fresh in the library. We really love helping patrons. We have a lot of regulars, and it's such a pleasure to work with this community. I really love bringing them, you know, useful physical and digital resources. And developing those collections has been probably the most rewarding part of my job, because it's so tangible to see somebody really love the book that they get. And then lastly, I'll just note that I'm really privileged to be part of the board's strategic planning committee. I'm really excited to identify the ongoing needs of the library and to keep on being part of that, that group on the front lines that's bringing all those, the community's ambitions to fruition. So thank you. That's the long of it.
That's great, Rachel. Does anyone have any questions about Rachel or her department?
Hi, Rachel. I have a question. I just, I don't know what the Acorn and the Canopy are. Can you tell me about those?
Yes, they're really nifty. So Acorn is, they're both streaming media products, basically. So Acorn is one that's offered through RB Digital, and it features primarily British TV and films. Acorn TV is a producer of British television. So think about like those kinds of BBC periods pieces, or those kinds of mystery series, Murdoch mysteries, for instance. They, that kind of genre is produced also by Acorn. So there's a bunch of unique shows there. And then Canopy is another standalone streaming media product, where it primarily has documentaries and independent films. And there's some really interesting stuff in there. And there's also foreign films. There's a bunch of contents for kids. And the thing I think that's been most popular with Simsbury residents so far is the Great Courses. You can literally stream videos of the Great Courses and learn about just about anything. They're really great resources. Check them out.
So are they apps? Is that, you just download the app? Is that how it works?
Yeah, totally. You can go through either the library's website, through the downloadables page, or you can set it up on your phone, on your device. I actually use Canopy on my smart TV. It's an app, too, for your smart TV. You can just stream it right through there. Same with Hoopla, in fact.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else have any questions about what we offer?
Just one more question, Rachel. With the digital media, I know you're like allocating your budget and finding an increased demand for digital. Will it be easier to maybe cull or weed out digital that's no longer popular, right? Like, it might go through a period where everyone wants it, and then it's taking up maybe your budget? I don't know if that's already happened. Is that easier than print media?
So interestingly, digital media doesn't work that way. Publishers have a real lockdown in how those things are priced and licensed. So for instance, we buy a license to an ebook for approximately $65. And then we are able to check out that ebook, say, under one model, for 24 months at a time. And then after that 24 months, that book just disappears from our collection. Or we have to purchase a second license if it is still popular. But we definitely really drill down into those usage stats, so that we're not buying, you know, additional licenses of things that aren't being used anymore. We let those licenses run down through the use, and then we're constantly buying new content to meet the new needs, where there are suddenly 40 holes, and we need to buy enough copies to meet that, that need. It's really interesting. It doesn't work like a print book, where you buy one and you're done. Or you buy maybe four copies, and you have four copies on your shelf forever. A lot of these models are set up to time expire after a certain number of months, or even after a certain number of checkouts.
Thank you. That's, yeah, that's good to know.
Yeah, it's, it's, they've kind of got us in a tough position.
Yeah, they charge much more for the ebooks than they do for print.
Truly. And the audiobooks are $95. Those ones really get me.
Any other questions for Rachel? Rachel, thank you so much. Your whole group is so welcoming when you go in there. It's great.
I'm glad to hear that. Thank you so much for having me. And if you ever have any suggestions, concerns, you know my face now, and I'm absolutely happy to talk.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll hang on to the meeting and watch silently.
Sure. Um, the next item is the raised garden beds. And Lisa, do you want to speak to that?
I sent out with the board documentation a rendering that I created of what, where the garden beds would be placed. And we're also going to propose putting benches on the opposite side of the walk, so people could sit on the benches and look at the raised planting beds. But interesting to note, the raised beds that we're proposing purchasing are also on wheels, so that they can be used for programming and wheeled around, perhaps even inside sometimes. And they also, because they're raised, are handicapped accessible. So.
Are we doing? I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Greg, I didn't see your hand. Go on. Greg?
Yeah, I had a question. Is that being done just by the library, or is sin-free beautification involved that? Because I hadn't heard anything from Elizabeth Bird about it.
It's actually something the library's proposing on its own, but will be working with the, the new pollinator group in town. So the library staff will maintain the beds, and will probably get help from volunteers as well.
Okay, got me in.
Great. That's awesome. It's something the staff has wanted to do for a number of years, and it just never came to fruition. But thanks to the pandemic, we've had some more time to regroup and plan. And so now is the time, I think. And of course, the Wi-Fi extends out into the area on the lawn and the, and the parking lot, so people could have used the benches to use the Wi-Fi as well.
Do you need anything from us, Lisa?
I need approval.
Go ahead.
Because, I mean, if you have purview over the library facility, I've already gotten permission from Public Works on the town manager, because this project also falls into the POCD plan, which is the policy of conservation and development, I believe. And that actually promotes downtown plantings, which this would then fall under that. So I would need approval from the library board to move forward. Now, we haven't decided how we'll be funding this yet. The town manager is confident she may be able to find some money to pay for the benches. If not, we'll look for grant funding. And the planters, we may be able to purchase out of year-end savings.
Okay. So do I have a motion to go ahead with the pollinator garden?
So moved.
Gardens and benches?
So moved, Marion.
Thank you, Linda. Do I have a second? Any questions of Lisa? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Before we move on, I just want to mention that this project is actually being worked on by one of Rachel's team. It was something that she had done at a, at a former residence in Boston. She worked in a community garden, so she's very invested in this project, and she's been helping me getting more information and moving forward with it. So I want to give Kathy credit for that.
It's a great idea. Yes.
Okay, if there's nothing else on that. Greg, do you want to give us a report on the Friends?
Hey, the, the main thing right now, it looks like we're very close to finally getting someone to handle the publicity chair. We've been without a publicity person for a while. I should know that in the next couple of days. Other than that, Lisa and I have been talking about, you know, the possibility of maybe being, being able to do a book sale. Obviously, that's our biggest fundraiser to support the library. And in order to make that happen, we need to start collecting books, certainly around Memorial Day. And she's having a meeting later this week with Maria, and hopefully we'll get some news. If we can't collect books, we can't have a sale. But that's a big money raiser for the library, so.
Well, the town looks forward to it, too.
Yeah, it's a lot of fun. I, I mean, I love doing it, but it requires a lot of work to get it to make it happen. So, and time.
Um. We talked about this morning, Greg, too. I just want to add that now that we have the vaccine clinic being held at the library every Wednesday, and there is no end date to that, that may be an issue, holding up the collection of books, because the health district does use the tariff room and the FSPL program room. So maybe we should.
Right, you had mentioned that this morning, and I totally understand. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's good that you mentioned it for the board. I mean, so they understand, too.
Yeah.
Kathleen also said that the Friends are going to be present at the referendum on May 4th in the library to promote membership as people come in.
Well, we, Polly helped us with that. We can't obviously be very close to that, and we're trying to figure out how we're going to deal with membership being at least 75 feet away from the whole thing. It's kind of up in the air right now, unless Polly has something new on that.
No, nothing new. I just want to repeat what I told you, Greg, and the Friends Board, that, by the way, I'm, I'm one of the assistant registrars that day at the referendum location. So I'll be there from 6:00 AM to hopefully only 9:00. Never know how the end goes. It's not like a regular election day, so it should be pretty, go pretty smoothly. But I informed the Friends Board that any kind of materials that want to be distributed need to be 75 feet away from the voting location. So the idea was to tag Team Lisa with your idea to set up the table where you wanted to have people sign up for library cards and do some kind of, either use the same space or another table nearby there to, to pass out Friends brochures. So just so you know what that's all about.
We haven't actually gotten to the point of talking about the library card drive for the referendum because of the 75-foot limit. I'm not sure that's even possible at this juncture.
Well, what it would be is, so what I understand from Susan Salina is that the people will be coming in to the double doors by the children's department and sneaking through to the program room, at the Friends room, and then leaving at the, the east door facing Hot Meadow. And then 75 feet from there would be a location, as long as the weather is decent, to set up a spot, which everybody would be, could pass by if they choose to, or it could even, you know, we'd have to measure it with a, with a tape measure.
Yeah.
And we could do that ahead of time. Greg, maybe you and I can go down there and meet, so we're not doing it last minute, maybe someday next week.
Actually, tomorrow, we're, the staff. I was going to be measuring tomorrow, because we have a leadership team meeting at the library on Wednesday, and I wanted to talk about it with them, so I'll.
Well, that's, that's great. Good. Yeah, and it's, it's, it's standard, so it's, it's not, it shouldn't be a surprise to anybody that this is the, the protocol for that.
Yeah.
So, thanks.
Thanks, Polly.
You're welcome.
Anything else for the Friends?
Well, that's, that's all, Marion. Thank you.
Okay. I just have a couple of things. They did, the painting of the tree was dedicated last week, and it's really beautiful. It looks great where it's positioned. And I think it's, you know, a real credit to the town in symbolizing Simsbury. I just had a couple of questions or concerns. Referendums tend, budget referendums tend to be very low turnout. Holly, would you agree? But with
Yes.
1,800 people signing up for Meadowwood to put it on the ballot, I don't know how we're going to do the parking. I think that will really impact the library that day.
Well, the library isn't supposed to be open that day. Is that true, Lisa?
Well, it's Tuesday, so normally.
The library will be open. They, they show us Tuesday specifically because we'll be open.
Hmm. But if they get, normally, referendum would just bring people into the library, which would be great. But there could be a large influx, which I guess I'm just raising a concern that I think parking will become an issue.
I'll have to see, maybe if the registrars have considered having some kind of police on, on staff that day in that location to direct traffic and to identify, you know, other places to vote or to park, you know, at the Boy Scout Hall and, I don't know.
Across the street, and then maybe have a police officer there.
I'll send a note to, I'm sure they've already thought about it, but just to reiterate from our perspective.
And the only other thing I would ask all of you to remember to vote to support the budget on May 4th. It's going forward with the $8,000 additional funding for the adult services for the children's books, and also for the computer update. So please remember to vote. It is May 4th, and it will be at the library.
And tell your friends, too, because a lot of people are going to still go to Henry James for the referendum. Or put it on your Facebook page, or Instagram, or whatever it is that you use out there.
Thank you.
I believe there'll also be a sandwich board in front of the library, too, so.
Good. Lisa, do you want to say anything more about your report?
I was just going to pull out some highlights. I, one of the most important things is that an offer has been made to a teen librarian candidate, so we're hoping to have that wrapped up this week.
That will be great.
Yes, that will be great. I'm happy to answer questions about my report.
Lisa, I have a question.
Sure.
It's under borrowing and technical service. On, I may be really ignorant about this, but it says a five, a fifth kit was added to the conversation kits highlighting hood feminism. What is hood feminism?
Well, since Rachel's here, and she created the kit, I'm actually going to have her talk about it.
Great, okay.
How convenient.
All right.
Hood feminism, feminism is the title of the book, actually. So that is, you know, these kits have four copies of a given title. One of the more popular ones that, that we have is How to Be an Anti-Racist. And this most recent one we added is called Hood Feminism. And so it sort of addresses the intersection of race and poverty, the wealth gap. So it has a lot to do with gender as well. So there's a lot about intersectionality, and thinking about how those overlapping identities can shape your experience in the world.
Okay, thank you. It was just a term I'd never heard before.
Yeah.
Does anyone else have any questions on Lisa's report?
I'm new, Lisa, but does the budget restart July 1, or is there a deadline for you to, for, or does the surplus carry over, if there's a surplus?
We can accrue, though, right? Lisa, we, if, if we buy things, we can accrue to make sure our budget is used.
Yes, that's what I was going to say. We will try to make purchases to spend down our savings and returns. And we're working on things like that right now. One of the purchases that we're going to make is another printer for the borrowing and technical services department, which will streamline their workflow. Also, their printer is not working. And we're also looking to replace the digital display bulletin boards. One of them currently is not functioning correctly, and the other ones are now 12 years old, so it's time to replace them.
Any other questions? We're under budget as of now. We have like 71% out of 75%, so. Any other questions? And we'll get to strategic plan. Heather, do you want to give an update? And we'll get to strategic plan. Heather, do you want to give an update?
Can I say more and more thing about the budget?
Sure.
Um, the town is changing their financial software, so your reports going forward will look a little bit different. We're changing over to Munis on May first. The staff is currently in the process of getting started. Um, so that's coming May first. Thank you.
Okay. Heather, do you want to give an update on the strategic plan?
Yes, yes, I'd love to. Um, so we're moving along nicely. Um, at our last meeting, we discussed uh kind of how we would like the survey to look, um, sort of turning outward into the community and and having some questions turning inward. Um, and then we were able to put some uh a survey together and I thank Rachel for getting that all up on um and Google Forms. So we'll be sending the survey that has been created out to the committee. And at our next meeting, we'll look to dis- to um discuss um the committee's channels to getting it out into the community and begin that process.
That's great. Thank you. Does anyone have any other questions?
Um, could I, is, this might be a question for Rachel and also the strategic plan. I was able to check out the telescope recently, which was kind of a new discovery. Um, but is there a catalog of things for for me to tell people like what to search for beyond just like looking for them on the shelves?
Yes, there is a page on our website um uh for the library of things and it lists all of our current things. I'm including a bunch of the board games specifically. So um they have links to them, so you can click on them to place holds too, which I think is helpful.
Great, thank you. I, we did enjoy the telescope. Thank you.
That's exciting.
Um, Polly, can I ask you a question? What were you saying about, has there been talks about opening, going back to face-to-face meetings? Did I hear you say?
Well, the governor put out a um a notice this afternoon that he's lifting restrictions. Uh, there's a, I don't know exactly what the details are, but there's a number of things being changed on the first of May and then another set of things being changed on the nineteenth of May. Um, I don't have it handy. I just got an alert on my phone. I don't know if anybody else saw it.
Okay, well, I'm sure it'd still be under the purview of Simsbury what they do.
True, right.
We have a leadership meeting for the Town Department. It's tomorrow and I'm sure that's one of the topics.
Okay, great. Does anybody have anything else to ask, comment on, want to put on the agenda for a future meeting? If not, I I thank you all for participating.
Maybe one more question. Uh, Lisa, is there, will there be any in, or maybe we don't know, uh, programming for children this summer?
We are standing to do some in-person programming for children this summer that will be held outdoors. So that is in the works right now. But it will, of course, be limited and signup will be required in case we need to contact trace.
Right, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn? Mark, thank you. A second? Linda? Or Holly?
Whoever.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you for your patience with our town.
Snap foods. No problem.